When we go out, have the security. So that when you are here, you are free to speak whatever that you think you want to speak of. But let's try and be sensitive. There are these things that are very personal. The ones that you are not able to speak through the mic. Sees one, any?
Uh, on Sina de Seguridad, si en el terreno van da'ani, ma se coola faas, dat ons is veilig als groot mensen. Ons is bijna veilig. Da'as punta wat ons nou kan bespreek en da'as punta wat u diep diep seer maak, maar ons kan het alke hier kan bespreek van da'ag.
Okay. So, we are going to give you a chance to come in front, share with us what is it that is left behind in this amendment bill that we have come and present to you. But not now. These chairs that are inside, or in the middle, are made for you to come forward to the mic. Please, when you come to the mic, remember Mama Kate said that you are wonderful and you are beautiful. So you must smile when you are here.
On zal dan nog voor ieler geleend uitgeven om voor hen toe te komen en dan opwees wat tekorten is en gaan de wetzomverping, Aristula, daar aan niemethel, als voor ieler om voor hen toe te komen en opbikken arderen mooi per at, laat almoed dan kan word.
Ken gooku, sisa, kun inika ituba?
Kukonakateta yo ha?
Yes ma'am.
Kauw puma goomsoms.
Sisa, inika ituba bandabadala? Ha, in gooku. Pas is kaba uteta ituba, nis oveza imiba. Eni ngakholisekanga ngalo. Kumbulani ndo Mama Kate itetile ndo goku bana? Ni bahe, funika kanisiza, geno kapo pambili, nis oveza imiba. Eni kwaze zulos la pemetilene, ni ngume.
Eh, asizu ku uteta indoes nganelisekanga ngayo, but sisa, uteta indoes funuku yongeza, kui bill.
We are not, we are not going to speak about things that we are not satisfied about, but we are going to aid with bill that we have.
The other thing that we must do is to say whether do we agree with the bill or not. We reject or we accept the bill as it is.
Nog een ding wat ons dan moet zal doen is of ons zal moeten andai, of ons samen stem voor die wetzomverping of ons stiendet is. En wat kan nog bijgevoegd worden?
Eni indos sisa, funika sienzi ndo goku bana, sisa utaz, ndo goku bana, indoni esivumelanana ngayo, nendo esingavumelani nayo, nendo ekfunuka ifa koe fute kulepille elungselelo yo.
Okay. Gooku sifika kuiska basoba sineke UMC asamkele, singe kazati sasamkele ngoku itu, sausamkele ati, nasingabala pa mosi. Sineke UMC asamkele, so that sineke geno ku umtu who's going to present the bill as isengayo, so as to be able ni eti she things that you think we have missed up.
Uteta ni sebekele apa gooku. Wens agentanimato. Ni zotini dada. What is it that you are coming for? Ku komse te ieler dan nog voor, um... Perda nimato, ta sanu siekele apa, babuze in, batin. Antivanga, la ta'ama. Antivanga, dada. He does not have a mic, so antivanga.
Oh. Oh, sani zo uteta, sani zo eti she eh? Oh, but you didn't hear most the bill. Ask aga i present. All right, it's fine. Okay. Maybe it is because that they are having the bill with them, maybe sebe redef very fast without gettele noh di... Let's allow them to sit there.
...bill voor alle des komele noh, al hi redelijk al voorgesitterd en alle redelijk al deer dat gegan.
Indalkans a yo mama, ndo goku bana, mchangbingen ngakba sani na i bill kon, sani phone dele, ilen ndo geno sani zlungsele uzokmaf, ni kwazgen gooku ni veez me voe ino.
Over to you, MEC. Ku nganiwe, pak ya sheshwa la.
Baj danke, Jefferson, van die Portfolio Committee, Honorable Vana. Latte gieridetet vaat om onze members van die parlement te groet en ik wil say, i is welcome in the North Cape in Abington. Ek zal Afrikaans, Jefferson, ek zal Afrikaans praat. Eh, ik denk die Afrikaans is, ons is allemaal comfortable met die Afrikaans. Ek gaan om goei, is nie zo goedie, maar ek zal prober. Ons is hier van da'ag. I, mensen, is bijna belangrijk van da'ag.
We are here, the portfolio people are very important.
No, it's fine, simultaneous.
Okay. Is nie elke dag of elke jaar laat ons members van die parlement, die parlement itself, naar ons toe komi.
It is not every day that the members of the parliament come to us.
Maar omdat hiri regering gezet, ons gaan achter onze mensen kijk.
But because this government indicated that they will look after our people.
That is why hu komele hier is van da'ag.
That is why they're here today.
Maar ek wil nie lang praatie, maar ek wil verieze.
I don't want to take long, but I want to say to you...
Ons als die North Cape, especially social development...
We as the Northern Cape, especially the social development...
Ons say baj danke.
We say thank you.
Om i van da'ag hier gekomen.
That you came here today.
I kan die programma je na geplek gevattet in die North Cape.
You could have taken this program anywhere in the Northern Cape.
Maar julle het gezien, dit is, julle moet hier na toe kom, Abington toe kom.
But you saw it fit that you should come to Abington.
Ons say baj danke voor i.
We say thank you very much.
En ons wil ook say, i is welcome in die North Cape.
We would also like to welcome you in the Northern Cape.
I kan missien die weer, i beet is lekker warm.
You can also see that the weather outside is very warm.
Dit is Abington dan. En ons wil say al, trek ei deelse bajkies.
We would like to ask you to take off your jackets.
En julle moet relax.
Relax.
Die mensen van die North Cape is bijna gawe mensen.
The people of the Northern Cape are very kind.
Al is vol liefde.
They are full of love.
En onze groot mensen is hier van da'ag.
And our elderly people are here today.
Om met i te kom gesels.
To speak with you.
En ek kan verieze voor ons nog aan gaan met die bill.
And I can say to you before we start the bill...
Alle gaan dit bijna positief vaat.
They will take it in a positive way.
Rest ashaw, they will welcome the bill.
Reste friere dat alle die bills al...
With those few words, ek wil say, onze ouers kom en sit en leester en kom ons participeer in die, in die bill. Lat ons kan, ei de ende van die dag kan ook onze stem goed maak en say ons het deelgeneem in die bill.
With that, I would like to welcome our elderly people and invite them to come and listen and also have a voice in what is, in what will be said in this bill.
Ons is hier als social development, ons, ons etok officials, die district director assokir, ons etok social workers, ons zal hier is om et al baj danke.
We are also here as social development, we speakers as well.
Danki topsi. Thank you very much, MEC.
Baj danke, MEC.
Will, can we please take the chairs and sit down? But I'm happy that it's not older people that are standing there at the back.
Kan ons onze blieftuule kreda achter en sit, ek is blij dat aani, ouer mensen is wat staanie.
There are the chairs by the door, so can we please get seated?
Kan ons onze blieft sit, die stuule zaar bij die deer.
Eh, puti. We abakaku selu kutikala bateni apa.
Sir, do you explain to them as to who are you supposed to sit there?
All right. Now we are going to give over to Honorable Madi Peterson to present the amendment bill that we have come for. And that is exactly why we want you, before who's in court you say your name, where you are coming from, you must also not forget to say that I agree with the bill or I support the bill or I don't support the bill. You are free to do that. But let's wait for Madi to present it. And just guess as zulos, young Ulisa, wait a minute. You are not going to just come and sit here in the middle. You are going to raise your hand and then you will be given a chance to come and sit in the middle.
I sali net kom en sit in i mitli, i sal i hand opleg en i sala geleend uitgegeven word om te sit in perat.
Di kela puti, nishali se oh sisi pa ngemva, no puti ababa milay, makta tuis zuloku zolwe. So as to be able to listen and hear all what is gonna be presented.
Please, gentlemen, assist the ladies there at the back for them to take the chairs and sit down. Please, everybody, let us just sit down and listen. Let it be quiet so that we can be able to listen to the bill as it is being presented.
The social workers, where are they? Because they have to take notes and respond to other issues that will be raised by older people.
Waare si menskapelijke werkers? Al is verondersteld om notes te neem en dan weer antwoord an wat die ouer mensen dan zal say. Waare si menskapelijke werkers?
They must come in front.
Kan ielles blieft voor kom sit?
Eh, just for the last time, can I request the social workers to come in front and listen to older person when they are presenting their challenges and also...
Ninga shafaga apa, ninga faga apa. I know, ni no i ku MEC, go. That's why nibalega, nibalegu MEC. Hey, ya zuluapa.
Ti kela utela bonke onontlalon tebeze apa ngapambili, bazom mamela imetli mgeni, abandabadala ba jonge nayoyo.
I want to know that, are you now afraid of the MEC? That is why you don't wanna come here in front?
Mapellele apa ne?
Is it all of them? Okwa gooku.
Eh, I'm going to give a summary of the Older Persons Amendment Bill.
Ek sal koortlik voor ieler die ouer persoon amendment bill vertijdlik.
The purpose of the bill.
Did you understand the bill?
The bill seeks to amend the Older Persons Act Number Thirteen of Two Thousand and Six.
Die wet op ouer persoonen wet nummer derdien van tweëreisenten ses om verlien machtiging.
To address its implementation challenges.
Dat die dienste aan ouer persoonen op onwettende gewerkom deer.
The reason why we are, there are changes in the bill.
Die redes, hoe kom naar veranderings is in die bill?
It seeks to insert new definitions.
Dat is om nieuwe definitions, definities antiset.
And new provisions relating to the monitoring and evaluation.
En nieuwe bepalings en gaande monitiering en evaluaties.
Van, of all the services to older persons?
Van al die diensten aan ouer persoonen.
To make provision for the removal of older persons to temporary safe care.
Om verskaafing van dienste aan die ouer persoonen en verantwoordelijkheid om te verseker dat die doelst, tolisting van die wewet nagekom word.
To make provisions for the removal of older persons to temporary safe care without a court order.
Om het seker te maak dat ouer persoonen dan verwijder word en na tijdelijke plek toe geneem word zonder oof befeel.
To tighten up the existing implementation and compliance measures and to effect some textual amendments to greater clarity.
En om, die, om...
Where's the lady that was with you? Die, I think, I think, I think, die, 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 Afrikaans yes. Om, 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 om die wetgeving van die, van waar da'af van da'ag is op die bill. Die implementation, hoe om dat te doen en die compliance measures, om dit rechte kree, so that ons kan meer clarity het en dat ons dit kan verstaan. What are the challenges it seeks to address in relation to the Older Persons Act? I'm going to talk about the challenges now.
Um, wat is die uitdagings, wat moet nagekijk word in die ouer persoonen wet? Ek gaan na die uitdagings toe verwijs.
The bill seeks to address the gaps that we identified in the Older Persons Act and its implementation.
Die bill versook om je nagu opapplekke uitteken en wat ook in die ouer persoonen bill wet is.
Da's sekerre challenges wat ons gaan. There are certain challenges that we are going to do address.
Daar is zekerlijk het uitdagings wat ons zal na toe kijk.
Die, lack of coordination between governments to deliver services for older persons.
Um, die feit dat die...
Die gapen tussen die regering en die mensen wat services moet deliver voor ouer persoonen.
Ek gaan prober.
Ja.
Okay.
Non inclusion in the act of the valuable role older persons play in their families.
Just come again, I missed the first part. I missed the first part, just come again.
Non inclusion.
Niet tolaten van...
In the act of the valuable role.
Op die wet van die waardevolle rol wat ouer persoonen speel in helle families. Now you're changing, that, now you're changing. That every people, older persons placing their role.
In terms of passing knowledge and wisdom to younger generations.
Om verseker dat daar weezheid en kennis naar die jonger gare gegever.
Geslag.
Geslag gegever.
Lack of legal provision for older persons.
Tekort en wetige rente voor ouer personen.
To be capacitated on non-communicable diseases.
Om te bemachtig word van ena gesiektes in die gemeenschap.
Lack of legal provision for services to older persons with disabilities.
Tekort en wetige dienste voor ou mensen wat dan ook ongeskik is of gebrekken het.
And chronic illnesses het.
En chronische ziektes het.
Lack of proper monitoring and registration of community-based services.
Tekort van monitiering van ena ge dienste voor die gemeenschap voor die ou mensen.
For the community-based services and residential facilities.
Voor die gemeenschap dienste voor die ou mensen en residentiële dienste voor ou mensen.
Lack of legal provision for training of caregivers.
Tekort aan wetige opleiding voor mensen wat dan dienst verschafs, zoals jou vrijwilligers.
Providing frail care services.
Om dan ook dienste voor ou mensen dan te verzien.
Lack of legal provision for the removal of older persons to temporary safe care.
Tekort aan wetlikige dienste voor mensen wat met rech verwijst word of dan na anna instancie toe verneem word.
Resulting in older persons continuing staying with abuses in cases where they have no alternative accommodation.
Wat dan tola dat mensen dan, ou mensen, altijd zal blij waar lig geen andere tweede keuze het om na te gaanie.
Eh, Jefferson spoke about the issue of people, uh, older persons staying with their children or their grandchildren.
Die voorzitter het genoemd dan van kinders wat, uh, uh, ou mensen wat samen helle kinders play en ook helle klein kinders.
And being, and then they are being abused and but now we can, we can take them away if we have proved that they are being abused by the...
Al is er rechte, wat dan nog gesken en maar nou kan ons helle ook dan wegneem als helle rechte gesken word.
And bringing gaps in bringing the alleged abuser before a magistrate?
Daar is ook dan een tekort om die persoon wat die ou mensen dan zo uitbeet om hem te laten voorkom bij rechte at magistrate of bij a hof.
As a result, cases of abuse of older persons are always thrown out of court due to lack of evidence.
Dit maakt dat dat al hier die zaken van die ou mensen voor dan ek verwijder of ek gegroe, want daar is nie genoeg samen bewezen.
Lack of a legal definition of physical abuse older persons are not protected.
Tekort aan wetige beschrijving van fysische nalatigheid van ou mensen.
Physical abuse older persons are not protected from certain unlawful activities that constitutes physical abuse.
Fysische mishandeling van ou mensen wordt dan nie omhals in die wet nie.
Uh, gaps in terms of, in terms of empowering a clerk of the court?
Daar is ook gapen om dan die mensen, die clerk van die hof, te bemachtig.
Or a register to provide the minister with the details of an offender.
Om dan die minister ook dan die jelle eindskappe of die inlichting van die persoon wat dan oordredder verschaf in die minister.
Conviction and sentence for the purposes of adding such information to the register upon conviction and sentence.
Die mensen wat dan skuldig befin is van sylke oordreddings, daar is geen bewezen dat dit bij die register ingehag word nie.
Then the last...
Die laatste.
Key amendments to address the challenges.
Die kerende veranderingen om hier de uitdagings te, an te sprek.
The key amendments to the bill include strengthening the protection and prevention of abuse.
Die kerende veranderings bij hier die wetgeving is om te versterk die, 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 die gapen van mensen te mishandel.
Strengthening of coordination mechanisms between government departments.
Versterk die koordination tussen die verskelende departamente.
Elimination of harmful traditional practices including witchcraft.
En om ook te verwijder die swerte praktijk van traditie en ook, uh, toerderij, ik ma so praat. Ek wil nie daai bedeek nie. Toerderij.
Accusations against older persons.
Beskuldiging teen ouer, ouer helle mensen.
Making provision for recognition the responsibilities of older persons in passing intergenerational knowledge and wisdom.
Om erkenning te geef van die oerplassing van kennis van ouder mensen van generatie tot generatie.
Enabling the Minister of Social Development in consultation with members of the provincial executive.
Om ook dan die minister te bemachtig om dan met die mensen van provinciale kabinet te anteer.
To make information available and counseling on non-communicable diseases.
Om inlichting bereit te maak en beskikbaar te maak voor ena gesiektes, aanstekelijke ziektes.
Strengthen registration and monitoring of residential facilities.
Versterk dan die registratie van dienste, gemeenschap dienste.
And community-based care and support services.
En ook dan die diencentrum beskikbaar in onze gemeenschappen.
Safe removal of persons to a place of safety.
Veilig appassing van mensen tot bij a veiligheidscentrum.
Inclusion of a person who has been maltreated, abused, neglected, or degraded by a caregiver.
Insleiding die persoonen wat nou heidiglik dan ook mishandel word van iemand wat omgeer.
Or a family member is a person in need of care and protection.
En dan ook een familielet wat dan een nodigheid van beskermen en een dienste nodigheid.
Extension of the definition of physical abuse.
Die verduidliking of, die verlengting van die, die concept van fysische mishandeling.
To include unlawful detention.
Om nog insleid die anneeming wat onwettig is.
Uh...
Anhouding, danke.
Yes. When, 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 uh, older persons are kept in the house without letting the people see them, that's, that's unlawful detention.
Onwettig om die ou mensen te verstiek as helle, in helle heze gewoord, as een manier het leek kan mensen kan zien die.
Medical sedation or shakling.
Daai sedation, medische sedation?
Verdoowings.
Ja, medische verdoowings, ja.
De privation of nutrition or medical care.
Ook dan niet tolaten van, uh, van medische se behandelingi en ook gerechtige sante etes.
De privation of nutrition or medical care, neglect, or exploitation of an older person in any manner.
En ook die uitbeting van helle ouer helle persoon in ena ge manier.
Those are the challenges that we want to rectify and get right.
Het uitdagings wat ons wil rechstel en dit rech anteer.
So that our older persons can be handled with care, respect, and dignity.
So that onze ou mensen kan behandel word met respect en integrité.
Thank you.
Baj, baj danke. Die samile ma.
Thank you very much, eh, meneer. Eh, I'm not going to repeat what has been said by Honorable...
Ek gaan nie, eraan wat mijn vrouw geset nie.
But you remember that...
Jelle gaan ondo.
Before we remove an older person...
Voor ons een ena ge ou mens verwijder.
We were supposed to get the permission from her.
Omsmo dan eerst daar die persoons tolatens, to stemen kree.
Now, the amendment bill is saying, if we see... If we see that it is necessary for the older person to be taken to the older center.
Dat is noodig voor hiri persoon om te verwijst word na een centrum.
The social workers, the social workers have got a right...
Die menskapelijke werkers is dan een rech.
To recommend that that particular person must be taken to a center.
Om aan te befeelen dat daar die persoon na een centrum toe moet verwijst word.
Old age home.
Na of na oudheist.
Those, eh, but the caregivers, they call them caregivers.
Hier die caregivers in Afrikaans.
Must be trained.
Teisversorgers moet dan opgelever.
Yes. They need to be trained so that they can be able to handle abandabadala in terms of...
Akle kan prober om die ou mensen kan mooi te anteer.
Because many of the times we take our people, older people, to centers, they are being abused even in those centers.
Ons vat ons ou mensen na hiri centrum maar word daar ook dan mishandel.
Mam men hand li shrepa.
Ta wordlo ook dan vervus. Daar word hulle ook dan vervus.
But I'm not going to add anything on what she has said.
Ik ga nie bijfuch wat ze geset nie.
Now it's your turn.
Dat is no etid.
Nenge, the those that are being left out and also that you think that we must...
Wat julle toch, wat kan bij gefuch word?
Hey, you fast, ma, you are very fast.
Gees baie van hoor?
When?
Oh, jy.
Okay, so I'm giving the chance to the older person to add or subtract and they must tell where they are coming from, the name, and also say that I accept the bill as you have come with it, I reject it because of APC.
Ik gehe nou kans aan die ou mensen, enige persoon wat naar voren kom en moet dan verhaal, om zelf voorstellen, va, zelf voorstellen en zeg, wat van hulle kom en dan eerst beginnen en zeg, ek kan far die wijziging op die wet of nie en dan ie in set lever.
Let me again remind you that the personal things that you would like to say here. There are social workers there, you can refer your issue straight, direct to the social workers.
Kom ik er ander net voor ie, is ie persoonlijke zakheid, hier is die maskapelijke werkers, kom dan en maak het et en hulle gaan isaki anspreken.
Maybe I have forgotten to apologize to the older person in terms of not getting their grant during the September month?
Ik het vergeert om dan net verskoning te maken aan al die ou perso- ouer mensen wat nie hella?
But I hope here...
Toelaag gekreed der gedirinde september nie?
I hope here MEC, all that has been resolved in terms of they managed to get their grant.
Ik hoop helle er alles is dan mooi geantier om hulle toelaat onvang.
It's your turn, Gengoku, can I see the hand, can I start this fight?
Dat is no ie helle tijde, hanna is a blief en ek is et.
Mama at the back with the yellow shirt or t-shirt is on a pambili and you sit here, then sees a kuwe body? Yeah, wom, siya kuwe pa?
Die moeder dat achter met de geel t-shirt kom en die lijn is a blief?
Siya kuwe, uh, ma with a pink thing?
Die moeder met die pink lapikey kom ook en die lijn is a blief?
Where you can go with a blue t-shirt, naan umtupai kneni baba or mama, I can't see. Please, yeah, oh. Ah. Okay, upaga misile ma, is your hand up?
Ja, asarek, asarek, ek sal na.
Is your hand up?
Asarek.
Okay, we'll bring the mic where you are, yes, yes, we will bring the mic, don't worry. Masneke ze itu bagetta, you can start?
Uh, ek wil se, goeie mora, alman?
I just want to greet everyone this morning.
Papa, once again, what do you want to do? Huh?
Ja, um...
All right.
Ik had noelaag asse mora of mora?
Stel de, as a blief, stel de?
I have already greet everyone?
Ek is Victor Potorius, ek kan far die wijzigingswet?
Hij kan far die wet wat voorgeleeg was volgend?
Ik kom, sorry, he accepted bill that was presented today? Ik kom van Groedrunkaf?
Your name, your name, what, eh?
Ik heb gesé, ek is Victor Potorius, leester toch?
Hij is name is Victor Potorius?
Askis, papa, askis.
Ja. Victor Potorius, ja. En ek se kom van Groedrunkaf?
Hij came from Groedrunk? So that there will be enough chairs or enough?
Daar is ook eens rolstoelen daar bij die kliniek, daar is ie en is die?
Sometimes you walk out to the clinic and then in his condition you will not find, uh, uh, the wheelchair?
Daar is nie is nie.
There's no one?
En daar is je voertig wat die pas- wat hulle wat die ou mensen kan rondtrey en gaan haal bij die isie. Ik moet start met me één been, honderd meter van daar booraf tot la bij die, uh, ou mensen centrum, moet ek start.
He also thinks that there should be transportation available for elderly people. When, for instance, when they make appointments to go to the clinics, the public transport to pick them up at the house and took them to the clinics.
Ja, en die ander dingen ze wat ons nog ondervind, ons die ou mensen wat ons ondervind?
What we resonate experience?
Bij die ATMs wordt ons daggestood tegen jong mensen.
When we came to the ATMs, we are being bullied by the young people?
Bij die winkels ook kan ons se toegang kreni, want ons moet se, umpi, wach, wach, jy moet lasta.
And so the security sometimes doesn't support us elderly peoples?
Baie dankie.
Thank you.
Maar hier die punt van ons van Groedrunkselde dik, uh, Groedrunkselcentrum, ons wil wet wat gaan maskapelijk werker doen, wat ons sekelaar?
Maar de point that you raised about, uh, Groedrunkselcentrum, die social development guys should do something about that.
All right, uh, who can the social worker, who's coming from Iwadiag? Who's your social worker, Tata, in your area?
Meneer? Uh, I, he say he don't live here, from the side that he recite? Groedrunk, they don't have social workers there?
We got no social worker.
And he doesn't even know something about social wo- uh, workers?
Well, and we don't know who can we contact?
He doesn't know who to contact?
Want ons kresuwaron, says hunger susus is done.
Jy gavin through a lot at Groedrunk?
The area of the center?
Ons coordinates is so lang nie betalen nie?
What?
Their coordinators are not being paid, paid?
Case, okay. All right, dankie, meneer.
Dankje, dankje.
Case, nee, case area?
Case, case area, case, case, ja, case.
All right, thank you. The next one, met tunan? Kune ngolo ek hoi, I don't know, indol niri kokoai?
There is a lot of noise here, I don't know what is being communicated.
If you want to speak, come up in the middle or raise your hand.
Als ie enige is, moet dus stek je hand op dan kom ie in die lijn wat in die middel is, dankje.
Wait, I'm going to give the second round, it's only the first round now, wait there. Okay. Ek is me vroeg kuso van Papalelo?
Uh, her name is Missus Kuso Papalelo?
Ons het een probleem bij onze oude heizen toe gemaak.
Si je het probleem daar in al eentje, cause he be sat down, close.
Opa's wat die vroens het, die wat freak van die hunger.
There are some old grandfathers that doesn't have their partners, they are dying out of hunger.
Want die oude heizen paie gehelp ver helle voor die kos wat na die heizen toe gedraa word.
When the old age was still operating, it used to help them.
Nou kren hulle die meer kosie.
When they sat it down, there's no food parcels or anything to the old age?
Die ou mensen doet nou van die hunger.
They are struggling to find food on the table?
Want die oude heizen toe gemaak.
Only cause of the old age center has been sat down?
En ons weet die wat is die probleem, laat die oude heizen toe gemaak het nie?
They don't know the reason behind the sat down?
So ons al wil wet wat is die oorzaak? All right, hang on mama, askis. Kune passi efikile yo, there's a bus that has arrived, nee? I can see byang enangoku. Those ones that are able to stand, can we request them to stand and give space for the older person? Please?
Als ie nog paar jong mensen wat die is wat kan staan, kan hulle ons a blief, want die ouer mensen ga leentie het reed om de set, as a blief. Daar is ander oors wat ouer mensen wat niks, niks woord of leester nie, want ons maakte veel gedreis.
All right, masi zolle, ek kubegeka mama. Ons het een probleem?
They had a problem?
Here in Apinten?
Yeah, it Apinten?
Yet ons kende geen onze social workers, nee?
We don't know our social workers?
Van halle lupo bij ons ou mensen sae heizen.
They don't attend to their work?
All right, you don't know your social workers? Mas pakamena, si social worker, pakaman betunan?
Let the social workers stand up?
Will you please stand up so that hu mama nibone? There are the social workers, is it your first time to see them? All right. Salan fansige mama, u weipi what ma?
Dis e Papalelo work thirteen?
Work thirteen? Naan u social worker, wagwa work thirteen up? E Papalelo? Naan ku ya uyambona mama?
Waputi, vini?
Omama, tejstos? Tejstosan?
E brot Africans?
Naan ku mama?
She's still an Africans?
Oh, ah, ti amazi, koda, akayi kuam, ai halibaisi, ek kenam?
She know that one, but she don't capture others.
Mamela tetapemai kinkalook? Mamela, mamela, ma, kukuyuchupo apa uzbonile uba uyavela? You can phone ek haya, uba buzu kutbaya kbona native, nanzi TV? So tetapemai kink, ube smiley, m- mta lela u masi uyambona je may?
Ay, ayanti mazi, kenam?
E prosi nie? Ja. Ons postkentoer is ook toe? Ja. Ons ou mensen het altijd daar gepijn?
They used to get every day their grant?
Daar is het voor ons nabij om die kop postkentoer te pin? Nou moet ons dorp toegaan?
The post office are very far from them?
Daar moet ons dorp toegaan om te gaan bij?
To town?
En das baie moeilijk voor ons met mani kirisloop?
In that situation, she cannot be able to do that.
Om bij die kumbis optiklim?
As a older person?
So ek sal reer, laat daar iets gedoen word in Apinten?
There should be something that we need to do in Apinten?
Apinten is in die achterkant?
Apinten is very, very at a lot?
Ons ou mensen word is kop toegevatie?
We are not being taken care of, minded in Apinten?
Bij die kliniek is die selde story?
The clinics are the same issues?
Als je kom bij die kliniek, daal hiep niet?
When you visit the clinic, they don't respect the elders?
Ochantte bij die kliniek? Daar moet je iset tot vier irto? Ja.
The service are been delayed when you came there?
Okay, the amendment bill is catering that, mta lele Africans kalook?
Die wet wat hulle aan ons voorgegeer aan ons bevat die inlichting wat omhoog?
That's why we have come here because in do you abandamatala, the older person needs to be care of and don't stand in queues and don't wait in long queues, you have to be prioritized. So siko na Apale? Do you agree with the amendment bill? Do you support it or you reject? So ek is baie blij? Laat jille gekommet en ons probleme kom leester?
She's very happy that you guys are here to hear out what they needs are in Apinten?
Maar jille me nou nie kom en ons jille ander kom, is dat wet jille nie meer van ons?
Don't change the faces, today we have other peoples and the next we have the other members.
Dankja, mamela, gemma, let me address that one immediately. If we are here today, the next term it's gonna, it's gonna be other honorable members that will come. It means that they are representing the government, the same government. So don't expect us to come back and come back and come back, il is really cool. Can you imagine, we are still going to northwest, to free state, to western cape? So whenever honorable members are here, they are representing us. Today, you are fortunate that the MEC, your MEC, who's in here, she's able to hear all what you are saying.
Sei wil het geofenig op die vraag wat ie of die komen wat kan leeren?
Siya bo ngama mingos?
Dat?
Au chong u gut ya support?
Helaan gaan verander? Het gaan die selle mensen wat die is vandaag wat weer gaan trankom, helaan uit ander provincies wat hulle moet gaan? So ons moet verwacht dat daar ander mensen wat kom, maar die werk blij die selde.
Ja, die bandas baie vergadering wat geloof word?
There were too many meetings that has been happening here?
Daar wordt, daar wet ons ou mensen nie darf aanie?
We don't know the result or the outcomes?
Daar woord jy de si vergadering al verbij?
But you were, you were present at the meeting, but you don't know what is the next, the outcomes?
Si almaal, maar voor ons ou mensen een rup nie? All right, who MEC, who coolumente? She will also come to you whether uyang is, is sent in Zenuw or use the olwen? But uyabe represent the government, so don't expect us to come back. Tinasisa zula sulanale pil, askeva whether you support it or you reject it?
Ay, siya vu yango bania si sa?
Sanu vu yaka loku, support or reject, two words?
Ay, asina rejecta?
Asinandon?
Asina akosi ni rejecta kalook?
Okay, dankje ma, dankje, dankje ma. Uh, die social worker yalenda, uw betuna, uw filonjombasani ngazway? Is a system, bo thirty numbers ga mama, ni communicate akwazi more than ba ekwazi? Basani kiila, bakile ni MEC, nee, senior yabo, upasuwa, bukod? All right, olande layowa?
Ma di se kwenkiya, kwenkuas? I'm the speaker of the ZFM district municipality here, but I'm also a senior traditional leader. I just want to welcome you, Jefferson and the committee, uh, as well as our MEC and Jefferson of Koka. Uh, ie wet? In a partit, wasa geen rechte van ons oursen?
You know, during the apartheid area, there was era, there was no rights for elderly people? They did not receive a grant, but they receiving one now?
They did not receive a grant, but they are receiving one now. During apartheid, our parents raised us with the little that they had. The president of the country said, "We must leave no one behind." That is why the president of our nation said, "I have left no one behind." I understand the law, but I want to see the law. How do we see the health of our old people? But the most important thing about the law is the right of the elderly people. I support the bill and the bill indicates that we should look after the well-being of the elderly people, but it does not speak to the effect of service delivery. Because as a municipal government, we can't block our old people's electricity. At this point in time, we cannot still be blocking our older people's electricity. And this is one of the clauses that we need to put in the service delivery of our elderly people. And then I want to ask our old people. This law that we just said, do we understand it? We don't talk well. You know, it's 2024, it's a decision. Every party will come for you to lie, to use your vote. I would also like to say to the elderly people, we should just accept, either we accept or reject this bill. There will always be a new government that will come and lie to the people. So today, if you say yes, you will say yes. If you say no, you will complain something that you said yes to. Some of our old people have wronged and abused the people. They don't know what the law is, they don't know what they think. They will not vote for the government. This is the law for the government. This is the law for our old people. Because most elderly people are being misled and they are told to go and vote against a certain party. But this is not a party, this is an opportunity for them to say what they have to say. I want to say yesterday, the Speaker of the Provinz, when he was speaking, we had a public hearing in Papua Lao. We had a public hearing in Papua Lao yesterday. And only one person voted against the bill. If there is something that helps you, say it. We know there are problems, but if there is something that helps you, say no. Don't say no to something that helps you. We know that there are problems. Because you see, the problem is this, as a municipal government, I see a few speeches about it. We have problems. At the end of the day, the people who believe in you, it's 2024, everyone goes to the age door-to-door. My mother, she is very bad in the government. We all are very bad in the government, but the government is the government that protects it. We know that in 2014, people will be doing door-to-door and be indicating how bad our government is. We know our government has their flaws. But I want to say, we don't want to hurt our old people, please. We are the government that protects it. But if you want to hurt something that is good for you, that is beneficial for you, now you say no. Thank you, I support the bill. Thank you.
Alright. You know, thank you, Chief. Chief, we cannot speak about the service delivery today. We are a social development portfolio committee.
We can't talk about the social development today. We are a deal of the social development portfolio.
But the services to the older person are the ones that are encompassed by the bill. Those are the services in our social development that we are rendering them to you. So today, we have come for the amendment of this bill. That is why we ask whether you accept it or you reject it. And then if there is something that you want to add, you say that you have managed to left behind this and that and that.
Today is here and we have the bill that is for us. What you have to do is, either you have to sign or media, if there is something else to add.
Thank you. Over to you, Dad. It's also, Mama, we haven't forgotten you, Mama. We'll give you.
But you will also learn to get it, we have not forgotten you.
Okay, thank you. I'm Ari van Skalkweg.
My name is Ari van Skalkweg.
And I come from the top service centre, Top Line.
I'm from Top Line Service.
From the top service centre.
On the top service centre.
Top Line.
Top Line.
I have signed the notification, the bill. This is what it is.
I accept the bill as it is.
Yes, it is hard to read. And so it is hard for people to understand, because it is only written in English. I'm glad that I can come here.
I am happy that I am here today.
I'm glad.
It has to make provisions to add.
If we look at South Africa's history, then we will see that it is like as if the older people were under our harsh conditions.
It seems like the elderly people who come from the poorer communities are being left behind.
In the commercial development of the land.
In the commercial development of this land.
We have not good old man centres where the old people can say, our top service centre is for the old people.
We do not have proper centres for elderly people that we can be proud of.
We have community centres that belong to the municipalities. From the community centres, it is so poor that it is not given toilets for the old people.
Some of their community centres are so poor that they do not have toilets for older people.
From the centres, it is so poor that it is not allowed in any place.
Some of those centres are so poor that they don't even have doors and windows.
Our commissioners and our committees are responsible for it.
Our committees and chaplaines should be able to service us.
It is very heartbreaking to see that. Our old people have to go 30 and 100 kilometers away to see a doctor.
That our elderly people have to walk about 30 to 100 kilometers just to go and see a doctor.
We have not had ambulance services.
We do not have free ambulance services anymore.
It is heartbreaking to see in South Africa how harsh conditions are.
It is heartbreaking to see how poor communities fall back.
So in the bill, there should be provision made.
Provision should be made in the bill.
That there can be a road transport for our old people to get to hospitals in time. In the bill, there should be a provision made, that there are good old man centres where the old people can have good services.
There should be provision made in the bill that there are good elderly centres for the elderly people.
There should be a provision made in the bill that should be enacted. There should be homes for the elderly. There should be homes for the elderly.
There should be a home for the elderly.
Organised.
And it should be organised.
Where we can be proud and say, if we look at Apinten, how many old days have the commercial people in Apinten?
If you can just look in Apinten, how many elderly houses are there? There is no home for the elderly. One good elderly home for our people.
There should be a provision made in the bill.
We should make sure that.
That it can be made for our people.
We should make sure that there is a provision in the bill to protect our people.
In the future life, when the young people have to go, where we will go.
I'll be very happy if the young people will take over the future.
That there should be a way, a proper way for the seniors where the next seniors or rather the future seniors would walk on. Thank you. Thank you.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen.
My name is Darkutziya.
My name is Darkutziya.
Come closer to the mic, Baba.
I'm from Keigeriip Municipality.
I am from Keigeriip Municipality.
A near setting country.
A near setting community.
My plea today is.
My plea to you today is.
That you should look after us, the elderly. I'm a bit young.
I'm a bit young.
He is 63 years old.
But I am 63 years old.
On the Dala Moscow now.
Thank you. So my plea today is. Come and see us, the elderly people.
My plea today is for us to look after our elderly people.
You know, our problem is here.
We have a huge problem.
For all clinics.
Especially clinics. From the clinic section.
They come to the clinic.
The clinic.
They are here.
Okay, especially at the clinic. You come to the clinic?
They are painkillers.
You don't even find painkillers?
And we need that as elderly people. So I want to ask you today. For all the social workers.
Especially the social workers.
I don't know if we have one. I don't know.
Which one are you coming from?
Selia.
Kakamas. 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 Where is the social worker from Kakamas Betun? Ayiko? Kakamas social worker? Area, the Kakamas area, yes. Upi. Akako. Bizengekama, bana kamalagi. Van Royen?
Come here, come here, come here. Come here.
Van Royen, where are you? Alright, alright, Mama, it's too late.
Can I please stop, please?
We are Columbon.
I only see her today. I am seeing her today.
Uh-uh. Wait, he needs to see you. Just come here and just wait and listen. He complains and concerns. Eh, Puti, you can tell me. Yeah, Betun, in the house, you can tell me. John, my king, he is very good. He is also interested. He is just standing here.
My last question is.
He has managed to see her. Opa, oma, opa?
Our friend.
Did you manage to see her?
Has he seen the human worker?
We are going to give you.
Has he seen the human worker?
Yes, we are going to give you a chance to give her your numbers, your contacts, so that I can visit her.
We have to learn to give her a contact number and name, then she can come to us.
Yeah, but I want to. So, so, welcome. I want to come to the clinic. Let the old people have a little food here. Because there are young people who are coming after us.
Come closer to the mic if she wants.
I want to. Let the old people have a little food here, at the clinic.
Yeah.
Because young people are coming after us. The old people are going to kill us.
I am asking for the elderly people to be service first at the clinic because the young people are being serviced first.
Don't go away, social worker. Now you have to go to the clinic. You complain in the clinic. When now you have to go to the clinic. You can tell me, he is a patient, he is a patient. He is coming to the clinic, he is a clinic.
So you have to give him a number. The old people are not allowed to sit at the clinic.
Next one.
Good morning. I don't talk about the clinic. I don't talk about the clinic.
Sondela, my king, Mama, you smile, you are good.
I don't talk about the clinic, because I'm not talking about the clinic. Everything I want to say, I want to hear that there should be better planning made, for the people who are standing at the bank. That someone is appointed, because you are a man in the government. Because he knows what he has to do, so he thinks later he will help us, but nothing is there.
What I am asking for is that people should be appointed to know their work and not people who have family members who are in parliament, who don't know their work. Later, we are being helped by caregivers who don't also know what they are doing.
That's all I want to say, but I want to talk about health. The day when Harry Sukey is here for us.
I want to talk about health and the day when they indicated that Harry Sukey is here for us.
And they said, we will receive all our services here. But today, after so many years, that is untrue. When we are still here today, we are young, we have to sit and wait for the road transport to Kimberley.
Because we as elderly people have to sit and wait the whole day and wait for a transport that will take us to Kimberley.
And if you come there, you will sit all night, to hear that a new date will come, to go 400 kilometers.
And when you get there, you will sit there the whole day just to find out that you are given a new date to come back and drive again 400 kilometers.
And in the process, our people die of cancer. So my complaint is that they should help us, that if only one doctor comes once or twice a month, and then they help us, so this is my plea, this is what I want to say.
My request is that you should help us, even if it's just one doctor who comes in once or twice a month, to help us get our biopsies and.
Because this is a hard task for me today, where I am here. I'm very hard here, because we are not helping you, because you are the ones who stood up for the people who are seated here today.
Who's Harry Sukey?
I am very heartbroken today because we are not being helped. We were the ones who stood up for the people who were seated here today.
Who's Harry Suker?
We is Harry Sukie.
Die hospital, Harry Suurdie.
The hospital.
Hospital, okay. The M E C is here with us, the chaplain of KOKTA is here. They are going to take up the matter to health department. Sit here in the social development, ne? But back ona, and social workers are here, they tackle all these challenges. This is ambitious, we corner ge corner, en ze pilongakoes.
Ik zeg bije danki daarvoor.
Danki.
En bije hebt nou ook al gepraat voor die bejaarde centra's.
So we.
Kan ik net, ik, ik wil net daar iets die ook in zeg.
I just want to add something with regard to centers for the elderly.
Onze zaak is, in die vorige commitee wat die jong mensen wat die commitee, wat die kom in die commitee was.
Previously, young people were in the committee?
En wat helaar gedoen het, helaar het ons rechtig waar, deri, in die gronten, uit elkaar uitgerijd. En vandaag stikken ons wat nou bijjaardes, het om weer op onze voeten te kom. Die combis uit elkaar uitgerijd, ons zit nou nie is een plek waar is kan bij elkaar komi. Zo dit is een hartseer story, zo ik wil net, die jong mensen moet groot gemaakt worden, laat helaar moet weet, helaar moet voor ons respect, en alles wat ligt om krijgen moet hem de respect behandelen. Zo dus al bedekant vandaag voor helaar vraag, en ik zeg bije dank, dat ik vandaag in vorige het om helaar te praat en mag helaar goede terugrijzeg.
What the young people did in the past was, they destroyed everything that we had. What I would like to ask is for you to teach these young people to respect what we have and respect us as elderly people as well.
En ik zeg danki voor die bill, ik, dit is, dit is recht, dit is maar nie wat ik, ja.
And I say thank you for the bill and I accept it.
Yeah, we said so here in the bill, in the amendment bill, auntie? Oma? Listen, we have had that in the bill, ne? In terms of saying that caregivers must be trained so as to be able to care for the older person. And then this one of the tommy's who have taken combis and all this stuff, can you go and report it to the M E C? Just go to her. Maga ngapaga mimatot, nanzint, zimki li combi, mke jong in do with tommy's, naangwea. Alright, the next one. Goedemiddag. Goedemiddag, mam. Onz zeg bije, on, ik is, sorry, ik het imi naam geseni, ik is Elizabeth Van Royen.
My name is Elizabeth Van Royen.
En ik kan Van Kariscamp.
From the side of Kariscamp.
Eh, die club is, se centrum is, eh, Hergsvrechte Van Kariscamp. Hergsvrechte.
Center's name is Hergsvrechte.
Ja, Van Kariscamp.
From Kariscamp.
My problem is vandaag hier, waar helaar hier staan, is voor ons ouder mensen.
My problem today is with regard to our elderly people.
Onz het bije gepraat voor ons ouder mensen, maar die probleem moet van mijn kop af gaan. Ik wil net zeg, die eerste punt van mij is, ons wordt nie recht gebehandelen bij gezondheid die.
The first point that I would like to raise is the fact that we are not treated well at health.
Ons moet klomgeal betaal, onze kant Van Kariscamp val onder Kanon Island.
We have to pay a lot of money, our side of Kariscamp falls under Kanon Island.
Ons moet rij goed hier, als ouder mensen, en die mensen vraagt voor ons net wat helaar wil.
We have to hire, um, transporters elderly people and people ask a high amount of money.
Ik wil vraag, kan die gezondheid, eh, mensen nie naar ons kan kijken? Laat daar weer die kliniek, eh, voor onze ambulance iets stier, als ons moet naar Kanon Island toe gaan.
What I would like to ask from the department of health is, can they help us the elderly to send out a vehicle to take us to Kanon Island?
En mijn ander punt is, bij, als die ouder mensen bij, dan gaan die ouder mensen te kemos. Helaar bij bij die bank, helaar moet lang rijen staan. Die jong mensen geen die plek, eh, afie, helaar zeg, helaar moet vroer kom. Maar ie weet ons ouder mensen kan nie vanhag beweegie. Daar moet helaar lang punt te staan, helaar moet staan tot wanneer helaar wil. Kan helaar nie kijken naar die ATM'ne nie?
My other problem is when the elderly people have to go and get their social grant, they have to go to kemos and go and stand in long queues at the ATMs. The young people can't move out of the way from them, they tell the elderly.